I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Jody, could you call the roll, please?
Dennis.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Hallenbaugh.
Here.
Odericio.
Here.
Phipps.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Rabando.
Here.
Okay, the minutes from our November 20th meeting were distributed for your perusal prior to this evening. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those same sign. Correspondence. Jody, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Okay. Which quickly moves us right into special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased this evening to have the opportunity to administer the oath of office to two of our brand-new firefighters. I'd like to ask Lori Crowder, the city's safety officer, and Chief Mormon, and Deputy Chief Martin, who is joining in this occasion. So we begin with Professor Banning. I'd like to encourage you to bring your family.
Yeah, absolutely.
I state your name.
I believe, Banning.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
To do my duty as firefighter for the city of Bowling Green.
To do my duty as firefighter for the city of Bowling Green.
That's my oath.
That's my oath.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Bowling Green.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Bowling Green.
I will protect, protect, safeguard, and preserve, and preserve, life, health, and property.
Life, health, and property.
Against fire and other perils.
Against fire and other perils.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office which I am appointed.
Of the office which I am appointed.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I think we have a bit of a tradition here at Bowling Green Fire. I think we might go over there. One of the things that we really like to do is we like to involve the family even at these events. So this is Boney Fatch, so I'm going to have Boney Fatch present that badge to him. They never listen. I, Bert Bridge, draw your hand, please. I state your name.
I, Daniel Ferrera.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
To do my duty.
As firefighter for the city of Bowling Green.
As firefighter for the city of Bowling Green.
That's my oath.
That's my oath.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Bowling Green.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Bowling Green.
I will protect.
I will protect.
Safeguard.
Safeguard.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Life, health, and property.
Life, health, and property.
Against fire and other perils.
Against fire and other perils.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position which I am appointed.
Of position of which I am appointed.
Congratulations.
Somebody's not happy. Not bad.
Chief Mormon, I believe, has a few words.
Do you need the wireless or do you? Okay, just use the cloud, please.
So one of the things I like to do, we always talk, say a few words about our firefighters, is they've got to rely on this year. I'm not as good as the mayor of reading things, so, or presenting, so I always like to read. So good evening, and thank you all for attending this council meeting tonight. Although Boney and Andy have just been sworn in as our new firefighters, they are not new to Bowling Green Fire. Both Boney and Andy have been here for one year, and in that time, they've had a positive impact on every member of the Bowling Green Fire Division. They have gone through such a huge transition from their very first day when they showed up at 700 hours in the morning. This first year is not easy as a recruit. You were flooded with a wave of doubt, frustration, and lots of long, hard days of work. Everything from pulling hose in a fire ground, coming from the carbon-fired water tower, and practicing CPR time and time again, and then some more. All this training is so that when those skills are needed, it all comes naturally to you. You are calm because you have the confidence in yourself. You are confident because you know that your brothers and sisters are there when you can help them and have your back. Most importantly, and I'm going to say this again, most importantly, do not forget that you were not going through this alone. You had to lead your family for 10 weeks while attending the academy in Columbus. They only got to see you for a short time on a weekend before you had to head back to Columbus. Now that you're back on shift, you're going to have to lead your family through the shift.
Did you plan that? Because that was really good.
I want to congratulate you both on officially becoming a bowling green firefighters. I present to you both Dan Darian and Boney Banning. Congratulations.
Okay. That brings us to lobby visitations. Jody, do we have people signed up for lobby visitation?
We do.
Okay. Do we have more than five?
We do.
Okay. Jody will call out your name. Since we have over five, I ask that you keep your remarks to around two minutes. When you come up to the podium, please give your name and address for the record.
Wendy Manning.
Hi, I'm Wendy Manning. I'm at 865 West Worcester Street, and I'm here on behalf of the Citizens for BG Dog Parks. I have four things I'd like to share with you. We're excited that a lease agreement is being worked on and will be coming forward soon. We are drafting articles. Second, we're drafting articles of incorporation, hopefully within the next 30 days. Third, we heard there was interest in a public hearing, so we request administration schedule hearing that would be appropriate from your perspective. And fourth, we want to invite everybody to come with their dogs to Ace Hardware to have pictures with Santa. Mr. and Mrs. Santa will be there, and we charge $10 from 1:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, and hope we have a good crowd. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bob Midden.
Hi, I'm Bob Midden, 549 Monroe Court here in Bowling Green. And I'm here to strongly encourage you to adopt the resolution in support of a market-based component to enhance citizen quality of life through improved air quality. I understand that this policy can't be fully enacted at the city level. It's going to rely on, it's going to depend on adoption at the state and national and global levels. But nevertheless, it's important that our leaders identify most critical needs that our community faces, and climate change is definitely one of the most severe, one of the most urgent. And I think it's important for us to express our support of that so that we encourage action, and that action is much more likely to occur, because climate change is advancing, if anything, even faster than scientists had predicted in the last 50 years. You know that we're experiencing, well, The Wall Street Journal has reported recently that we're now experiencing weather disasters that cost more than $1 billion on the average every three weeks. Back in the 1980s, that only happened about every four months. And the NOAA, the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, has found that September this year was by far the warmest September on record. In fact, that September was warmer than the average July up until about 2010. It's advancing rapidly, and we don't have time to waste. I'm here partly out of guilt, because I'm afraid I haven't done enough for my children and my grandchildren. They're the ones that are going to experience this much more than I will. And it is absolutely critical that we act. Please adopt this resolution.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Excuse me, Charlotte Wright. Good evening. My name is Charlotte Wright. I live at 428 South Main, number three. As I've mentioned in prior meetings, climate change is already costing us. We have sustained droughts in one part of the country and floods in another. We have annual heat waves that are killing off livestock, and ocean acidification and warming that are putting even more pressure on our stressed fishing stocks. We have massive drought-fueled wildfires that destroy billions of dollars in property and damage our timber stocks. Climate change is already threatening the livelihoods of workers who are trying to support their families, and it puts our food systems and global stability, such as it is, at risk. But right now, what I want to talk about is the future. The truth is, there will never be a perfect solution to the mess that we are in. There will never be a perfect time, the perfect economy, the perfect political situation. The longer we wait to make choices about the kind of future we want to live in, the more these choices are going to be made for us by the pressures and consequences of a degraded environment, and we are not going to like what those choices are. But the thing that keeps me going is this. Every day, a lot of hard-working people who care a lot are working hard to do their part to steer us towards a responsible, sustainable future. We have the solutions. We do. What we need is to implement them fast enough, and we need leadership. We need people at every level of American society to speak up about the future they want to live in. I support carbon fee and dividend, because I think it is one of the best solutions we have. It is not perfect, mind you, but I think it's one of the best. I want the town I live in to continue its environmental leadership, not only for me, but for the next generation, my baby nephew's generation. I want a future that I'm proud to hand him, for the natural beauty of this state, for our clean air and water, for jobs, and for safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Michael Kuntz.
Sorry, I'm a little tall. Michael Kuntz, 707 East Mary Street, Bowling Green. Hello, I'm an environmental science major and student representative from BGSU. I'm here today to give you my perspective on the carbon dividend issue as a younger member of the community. As my grandfather used to say, I try to leave things better than when I find them. And so I'll try and leave this earth better than when I found it. I'm not here to give you stats, facts, or statistics, but rather to ask the council a question. What quality of life will my children and grandchildren have while living in Bowling Green in the future? The amount of carbon emissions we generate today will have profound negative impacts on the generations of the future. My children and grandchildren will not be able to grow up in the world that you and I both know. They'll be forced to deal with our short-sighted choices. But today, we have an opportunity to change things for the better, to change what the future's going to look like. My children and grandchildren will have the opportunity to live in the world that you and I both know and love today. Today, our community can reduce the amount of carbon emissions we generate, and we can also inspire others around us to do the same. Just like my grandfather, I'd like to leave this earth better than how I found it. And today, we have the opportunity to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bob Clark Phelps.
Bob Clark Phelps, 640 Ashbury Drive in Perrysburg. Good evening. Regarding, again, Resolution 3859, let's consider why it's necessary and appropriate for you, as council, to support a federal carbon fee and dividend policy. Consider the recent history of Elicott City, Maryland. On July 30th, 2016, the city received six weeks' worth of rain within 90 minutes. Main Street turned into a river, and cars were tossed about like rafts, some with people still inside of them. Much of the city center was destroyed, and two people died. The storm was rated as having a one chance in a thousand of occurring in a given year. Local businesses worked to rebuild, and many considered the flood a freak event unlikely to reoccur. On May 27th, 2018, less than two years later, disaster struck again. Another torrential downpour, again with a probability of 1 in 1,000, deluged the city, once again causing widespread destruction in the historic downtown area. Gone was the talk of a freak event. Today, Elicott City is moving forward on a $140 million plan to re-engineer their stormwater management. Four historic buildings will be demolished to make room for new culverts. Bowling Green does not face the catastrophic flood risk of Elicott City, but damaging flash floods can occur almost anywhere. First Street Foundation estimates that over one quarter of all properties in Wood County have a greater than 26% chance of severe flooding in the next 30 years, and that's with a 1 in 100 probability event. When a month's worth of rain falls in an hour, almost any city's stormwater systems will be overwhelmed. Here's what we know for sure. Pumping more carbon pollution into the atmosphere is increasing the risk of extreme events everywhere. If the federal government fails to address this issue, local communities will pay the price. I urge you to pass this resolution. Ask our representatives to put us on a path to a stable climate and a safer and more prosperous future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alex Neelik.
Hi, I'm Alex Crelik. I live in 514 North Annapolis Street in here in Bowling Green. I'm 20 years old. I am a third-year student at Bowling Green State University, and I'm also the president of the Environmental Action Group on campus. And of this, one thing that club has taught me about the environment and being young is that we should be doing the most to positively impact the environment. And one thing that I always do in meetings is I always think of things and present things as in a positive light instead of focusing on the negative things, such as carbon emissions and other negative climate impacts. And so, although we can focus on many negative climate impacts, I think that we should be doing the most to positively impact the environment, such as the Energy Innovation and Climate Dividend Act. If one thing my classes have taught me is that although animals and the ecosystem are available of great adaptation and change, we are negatively impacting the environment at such alarming rates in ways that they are not able to adapt and change. And although we try to act as a society that we are not a part of the ecosystem, we are very much a part of the ecosystem and very much can be negatively impacted by it. So I think that every person, every society should be taking a positive step forward, which is why I support the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's everyone.
Okay. That brings us to the introduction of new legislation. Mr. President. Mr. Robinette.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I have ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023.
Mr. President.
Mr. Odericio.
I have a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and execute a contract upon grant application approval under the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program as authorized by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended.
And I have an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into contract contracts for supplying annual inventory requirements, underground and overhead lines insurance, and the sale of scrap materials in 2024. Which brings us to official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report. Subject to any questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for the mayor this evening?
Mr. President.
Yep.
We, I was here before for the Finance Committee meeting on Ordinance 9131, which comes off the table this evening. I was interested to hear your thoughts on this, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. I thought that Brian O'Connell did a very good job of sharing some of our administration concerns. I think that in whole, this legislation would not necessarily alter any of our existing policies or procedures. I did have some minor concerns around, first of all, just in general, noting the fact that Bowling Green, as you are all well aware, is a municipal utility, meaning that we operate our own water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, and we operate an extensive electric grid. The maintenance of those components of the system oftentimes require very specialized work, whether it's for the installation of components that make up the system or maintenance of existing components of the system. So any part of the legislation that could potentially limit the field of prospective bidders is a concern considering the specialized nature of a lot of that work. In particular, the one element of the legislation that concerns me, and the irony doesn't escape me, is that the requirement for contractors to employ graduates of certified state apprenticeship programs. The irony is that I'm a graduate of one such program, so I certainly understand the value in encouraging apprenticeship. In my experience, we sometimes contract with entities that don't always have necessarily licensed and monitored apprenticeship programs. Due to the specialized nature of that work, a lot of these companies train from within. They hire people with mechanical aptitude, and they basically provide them on-the-job training, which of course is very beneficial. And on-the-job training can be as beneficial as formalized education in many instances. So to sum it all up, I do have some concern with that requirement that would only, that would require us to employ companies that only employ graduates of these type of apprenticeship programs. So I would consider, council, if at all possible, to consider modifications to that clause of the legislation that could provide some amount of flexibility in that component.
Thank you. I guess, Mr. President, at some point, I'd be interested to hear Jeff's reaction to that, but I'm happy to wait until we consider this later.
Right.
I have two amendments prepared, if Mark will allow.
Well, why don't we do that during discussion?
Just a little teaser.
Okay. Well, everybody stay in your seats. Don't go anywhere. Things are going to get saucy later.
Don't want to overpromise.
Well, I like to oversell. Okay. Any other questions for the mayor? All right. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening, council. At the end of the last council session, you had asked the administration to consider a way to post pending legislation on the website that you'd received requests about that. We did talk about that internally, and we'll be proceeding with a process to do that. Our concern, or what we're working through, is how one posts something as it's going through the process and make sure that folks know that that's what's in process, that it's in draft format. And so we're trying to work on language to just differentiate what is in the pipeline and what has been passed, helping people navigate, looking at legislation that has been signed to make sure that they have the most recent copy of what council passes. So we will be working on that. Jody, we'll be working on that with our communications folks, and we will let you know when that has been launched. And that's all I have this evening. Pending questions.
Okay. First of all, thank you very much. And secondly, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Tretter?
No question. Just echo what Mark said. Thank you for looking into that, and quick turnaround. Really appreciate it.
Welcome.
Okay. City Attorney, Mr. Brown.
No report.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Brown this evening? All right. Public Infrastructure Director, Mr. O'Connell.
No report. Let's have questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. O'Connell this evening? Okay. All right. Well, that brings us to council committee reports. Any council committee reports this evening?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
Earlier this evening, the Finance Committee met to discuss Ordinance 9131. We heard from our colleague, Councilmember Dennis, the Public Infrastructure Director O'Connell, and the City Attorney, Attorney Brown. At the end of, it was a very informative meeting. I think we learned a lot, answered some questions. The committee, however, declined to make any recommendation to the full council.
Any other council committee reports?
Mr. President.
Mr. Odericio.
Last Thursday, the Committee on Community Improvement met and discussed four ordinances. They are being returned to the council for discussion next session. We made some minor recommendations.
Okay. And those recommendations will be sent out to everybody prior to our December 18th meeting?
Correct.
Awesome. Any other council committee reports? Okay. Hearing none. Jody, could you lead us in the reading of legislation?
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3860 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and execute a contract upon grant application approval under the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program as authorized by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. Ordinance number 9153 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 9153 its second and third readings.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Jody?
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rabando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended for Ordinance 9153.
Ordinance number 9153 for second and third readings. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette. I move to adopt Ordinance 9153.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. Jody?
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Robando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 9153 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9154 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into contracts for supplying annual inventory requirements, underground and overhead lines insurance, and sale of scrap materials in 2024. Legislation for second reading. Ordinance number 9152 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator to dispose of equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes. Legislation for third reading. Resolution number 3859 for third reading. Resolution in support of a market-based component to enhance citizen quality of life through improved air quality.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we approve Resolution 3859.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yep.
As has been pointed out, the resolution itself has quite a bit of verbiage to it, a lot of whereases, and so I thought I would read them all slowly. I'm kidding, I will attempt to summarize that it's basically market-based, partial solution that is part of an all-of-the-above mix that impacts energy production. And it's a, it's a partial, but it's a significant solution if fashioned correctly in a bipartisan manner with the strengths and weaknesses honestly identified and properly balanced. And this resolution is, the intent is to send that message to our state and federal leaders so they can, so we can add our voice to the others and hopefully get some action.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Yep.
I would also like to just say that I think it's extremely important that we listen to all the voices that have spoke here today and, you know, really vote to approve this to express our support, to encourage action. And with that being said, you know, as Councilman Harold kind of noted, we're not the ultimate arbitrators of this, and as people have spoke about that as well. And I hope that if we are able to pass this, that people continue to reach out to their state leaders and their federal leaders and hold them to account and hold their feet to the fire, because there's only so much we can do on a local level, and there's a lot of individuals who skate by without being heard from, from the public. So if we are able to pass this, I really hope that you're able to take this to our state leaders and our federal leaders and make sure that they're hearing your voices as well. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I won't repeat my comments from two meetings ago, but I, but I stand by them. It appears I do disagree with my colleagues as to the appropriateness of this resolution at the city level. And I also still do not support the current legislation pending in the U.S. House, so my position has not changed.
Any other discussion?
President?
You already had your turn. Just kidding, go ahead.
I'll go zero times next thing. I, I respect that anyone that would not support this because they feel it's inappropriate. That was my initial position, but then as I worked on it and looked further into it, I thought it, it is something that we should lend our voice to. But as I said, I respect if people decide it's not appropriate at this time. And then also, I just wanted to make sure that, to thank the many individuals that took time to, to address us. I know that many of them are, worked tirelessly on this issue and have become very, very knowledgeable. And so I wanted to publicly thank you all for, for doing that.
Anything else? Okay. Jody?
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
No.
Robando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes. Resolution 3859 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9146 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section 33.04 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio relative to pay scales for seasonal employees.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9146.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Robando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 9146 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9147 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting sections of Chapter 30 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green regarding members, compensation, terms.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9147.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Robinette.
Yes.
Robando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 9147 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9149 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing an easement for a first energy transmission line.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9149.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Robando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 9149 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9150 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into contracts for services associated with a geographic information system utility poll audit.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9150.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Robando.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 9150 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9151 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to execute a conduit lease agreement with Amplex Electric, Inc.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9151.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Robando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 9151 is adopted. So at this point, Ordinance 9131 comes off the table.
Automatically.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9131.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? You promised discussion.
They all stayed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I, sure, I'll dive in here. So the mayor made a great point earlier. You know, I think that particularly in the Perrysburg ordinance, this is an issue that I've addressed. Probably given a little more time, I would have addressed it here as well. So I will, I would like to propose an amendment, if I may. Now, I don't have this in writing, so I'm just gonna read it from the Perrysburg ordinance. Do you guys want me to pass it up and down the table? How do you wanna, can you follow me?
Read it, but don't refer to it as Perrysburg.
Okay. Yeah, well, believe me, I had this idea before Perrysburg did it.
Naturally.
They passed it first, but that's because they don't have anything going on up there.
Uh huh.
I'm kidding. Okay, so under section, so Section 1B, item 3, the bidder currently reads, "The bidder participates in, sponsors, or exclusively hires graduate of a, graduates of a construction apprenticeship program, et cetera." I would like to propose that we amend that to read as follows. "The bidder hires employees who have done one of the following. A, graduated from or are participating in a construction apprenticeship program certified and regulated by the State of Ohio or the U.S. Department of Labor, or" Item B, "have at least five years of documented experience in the specific field."
Can you read that one more time, please?
"The bidder hires employees who have done one of the following. Graduated from or are participating in a construction apprenticeship program certified and regulated by the State of Ohio or the U.S. Department of Labor, or B, have at least five years of documented experience in the specific field."
Second.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay.
Sure. All right, an amendment has been made and seconded. Any discussion on that?
Mr. President?
Yep.
Just a point of clarification. When you say "and," you really mean "or," but in legalese, it probably doesn't matter.
Which "and" or are you referencing?
First "and," even though you mentioned "or" later.
"Graduated from or are participating in a construction apprenticeship program."
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So that should be, and again, not great drafting, if you ask me, Perrysburg. Semi-colon, "or have at least five years of documented experience." No, it would be an either-or, so this would be, this would broaden the...
When you read it, it sounded like both or something. Okay, so that, either-or.
Yes.
And the second, thank you. And the second question is, five years? That's what that other city had, but is there, can you think of any rationale for five years?
We're able to discuss now, correct?
Yeah, it was seconded.
So in addition to this amendment, provided it passes, I've got another amendment to address the other end of the spectrum, which would be that up to 25%, so notwithstanding that requirement, up to 25% of the bidder's employees may be participating in pre-apprenticeship programs, career technical programs, or otherwise have less training and experience. So what that would cover would be your Penna students. I think Owens is actually an apprenticeship program, so that would maybe be a poor example, but...
Okay, so if we had a company that did not have everyone with at least five years experience, that would be okay, because they only need to have up to 25%? Am I reading that right?
If they participate in a construction apprenticeship program, my reading of that would be that that would be acceptable.
I see. Okay.
So there's, there are really several exceptions there, I think, to what the original rule.
Okay.
Any other, any other discussion related to that change? Okay. Jody?
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Robando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Okay, that amendment is adopted for Ordinance 9131.
Okay, Mr. President.
Yep.
I've got an additional amendment I would like to propose. In terms of organization, I would probably add this as a number four under Section B, and that would read, notwithstanding the requirements of Chapter 35, Section B 3, "Up to 25% of the bidder's employees may be participating in pre-apprenticeship programs, comma, career technical programs, comma, or otherwise have less training and experience." Again, that would create another exception for students who are completing on-the-job training.
Can you read that again, Jeff, please?
I imagine Hunter's probably gonna want to go over this specific language here, right? So I'm not gonna. "Up to 25% of the bidder's employees may be participating in pre-apprenticeship programs, career technical programs, or otherwise have less training and experience." Yeah, I can pass this down if you want.
You actually, the language was attached to your Thursday email, Perrysburg ordinances, ordinance, excuse me, August 2023, is attached to your, actually, that's just the date you saved it, I'm sorry. That's, that's attached to your Thursday memo in advance of the Finance Committee meeting. So we have it, if someone wants to dig.
Perfect.
That hasn't been seconded, has it?
Second.
Oh, it has been seconded.
Great. Then, just to verify, I think you answered this already. If this amendment passes, it has an influence on what we just passed, in that what we just passed doesn't become an absolute, because there's a way that people could, that companies could have up to 25% that don't meet the requirements that we just passed.
Yes, this would be an additional exception.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
No, but I think I, it does.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion on the proposed change being referenced to at this point as number four, Section B? Jody?
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Robando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes, so that second amendment has been adopted for Ordinance 9131.
Any more? That's it for me.
Okay. Any other amendments? Okay. That being the case, do you want to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 9131?
I believe Greg made a motion to adopt, and Jeff seconded it. I'm assuming that it would basically morph into adopt as twice amended.
Okay. So then, Jody, could you call the roll?
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
No.
Robando.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
No.
Hallenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Okay, so Ordinance 9131 is adopted as amended. And that brings us to, is there any other business to come before council this evening?
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
We have, on occasion, run into current Roberts Rules of Order that I think, in a sense, stifle our ability to come up with even better legislation. And that is, if we table something to a date certain, and then additional information comes to light, the way things are structured at this point is we cannot table it again. And what I would like council to consider, and maybe we can bring it up at a later date, is we do have the ability to alter our rules and make exceptions to Roberts Rules. And it takes a supermajority, but we do have that ability. And if legally possible, and I, my guess is that it is, because it's right in our ordinances that we can do this, I would like us to make an exception that we can retable something. And the reason for it is, well, this is a good reason. I mean, what we just experienced, I would have been much more comfortable with, and I wasn't dramatically opposed to the legislation, but I would have felt more comfortable with looking over the amendments and all that. And we didn't have, we don't currently have, the ability to retable it. So I would just like you to kind of think about possibility that we make, we pass legislation to make it an option for us, if we table something to a date certain, to again table it to a date certain. I think that would give us the opportunity to study something further or adopt or adapt to certain...